Check, 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 check one, two. This is an audio test for Adam. Check, check, one, two.
You
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting. If you would all rise, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome to all our guests today. As is our standard, if you have anything that you want to share with our group today, there's a sign in up front. Feel free to do that. And as we get through a topic, just sort of a protocol of the committee, we'll ask questions and go through, and then there'll be a time to have the audience share their piece if they want to add to that. So, welcome to our meeting. Any adjustments to the agenda? No adjustments. Communications? Good there. Bill's schedule has been approved. With that, I will accept a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes of December 6th and 13th.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. With that, we will slide into the superintendent's report.
Hope the technology works. Mary Beth and I were down here earlier, so let's hope for the best. So this is the first step of our budget cycle. So this is our preliminary FY24 maintenance of effort budget. For those of you that are new to the process, maintenance of effort means doing everything we're doing this year at next year's prices. So it takes into account collective bargaining increases, proposed inflation rates, changes in tuition placements, all of those types of things. So literally everything we're doing, class sizes staying the same, offerings staying the same, just at what next year's prices are. So, if we do all of that, if we take a look at what our budget is this year, which is $36,615,000, in essence, roll it forward to next year, the total would be $38,426,903. So that is a difference of a little over 1.9 million. There's a bit of a difference there from when Natalie printed the slides. So I just wanted to give you an idea of where we've been in the past because that number is pretty shocking, right? 1.9 million dollar deficit is a big number to be looking at on January 24th. So just taking a look down the bottom at previous fiscal years and where we have been, it is not out of the realm of where we have been. So there's been no adjustments taken to the FY24 budget yet. There's been no concessions for retirements, any of those types of things. So, once we start to make those adjustments, that number will come down. And over the next two weeks, we'll have a better idea of some of the numbers at the state level. So the governor's budget has not been, the chapter 70 number has not been released yet. We do not have a proposed number from the town manager at this point for what the town contribution would be for FY24. So as those numbers start to come in, we hone in on that difference. And then we truly have a better idea of what the number is that we're solving for.
And these numbers down here represent what the gap was?
In those years, at the same time, at the end of effort time.
So we're basically right where we've been most years?
Yes. There are a couple of items in the maintenance of effort that I just want to draw our attention to. So as far as collective bargaining increases, as we've talked about before several times through the negotiation process, we're in a multi-year contract with our employees, units A and B, which are the teachers and the nurses, C, which is the custodians, D, the educational support professionals, and E, the cafeteria workers. Those are all multi-year agreements, but this is the largest increase in those agreements. So for example, for our teacher's contract, it was a two, two and a half, two. So we're in the two and a half years. So the collective bargaining accommodations in the FY24 budget are slightly higher than they have been in years past. We've talked a little bit at this table about the operational services division proposed 14% increase on special education tuition. You'll remember you all sent a nice letter to our representatives. I sent a letter on the district's behalf just around the normally high increase to OSD tuition. So in general, the past 12-year average has been about 2.6%, I think. And this year, we're looking at a 14% increase. So that translates to about $472,000 of an increase in special education tuition, which is much higher than it is in previous years. Our transportation contract, again, I'm sure many of you are exhausted from the number of emails we send to you regarding changes in transportation. Everybody is well aware of the national shortage of bus drivers. You know, First Student, our transportation provider, is doing everything that they can to fill those vacancies, but the demand for transportation is higher than it has been in the past, which then, as you all know, our economics majors drives up the cost. So there was a 7% increase in our transportation contract this year. There is, if we were to stay with First Student, we have, we do have one more option year left on our contract. They're proposing an 8% increase. We did say we were going to go out to the, this year, just to see what else was out there. I don't anticipate it coming in any lower than the 8%, but if it does, we will adjust accordingly in the budget. The last thing on there is the special education tuition pre-buy. So annually, for the past five years, we have been able to use some of our year-end fiscal dollars to pre-purchase transportation for the fall, I'm sorry, to pre-purchase tuition for the following fiscal year. So for those of you not familiar with that process, tuition is one of the only things that you can pre-buy underneath the municipal finance laws. You can purchase a year's worth of collaborative tuition and a quarter of a private placement. So we try to kind of get all of our dollars together at the end of the year and buy down as much tuition as we can to buy us some flexibility in this next year. The budget that you have there, that dollar amount for FY24 assumes no pre-buy. So if we are able to continue with our pre-buy, which I anticipate we will be able to do in the range of $400,000 to $600,000, that number would automatically come down by that amount. So the deficit would go down to a little over 1.5 million. So we are just taking a look at what we have left this year for our placeholders that are out there. So as we've talked about before, there are students at various points in their placement process throughout the school year. So we have a couple of placeholders in our budget for this year, but once we narrow those down, I'll have an exact figure for you for the special education pre-buy, and we can automatically lower on that deficit that we're looking to solve for. I thought it would be helpful for you all just to see in general the historical tuition amounts year over year for us here in Pembroke. So you can see FY24 is proposed at $3.3 million. That's about an 11% increase over last year. Again, the bulk of that is due to the 14% OSD rate increase. Not all of our tuitions are set by the operational services division, which is why that isn't just a straight 14%. There are a few of our schools that don't fall under that authority for tuition sending, but...
Was the, I wasn't around, what was the 17th jump? Why, why was there such a gap?
I think that's the adjusticle. Just kidding. No, that was a, there's, so we've talked about this a little bit, and I'm just happy to reiterate it for folks that are just joining us in the process or kind of new to this in general. Special education placements range from a collaborative tuition that could be anywhere from $42,000 to a residential placement that could be upwards of $400,000 a year. So one or two residential placements in a year is a huge increase for a district. So there, in those transitional years there, there were a couple of placements that were residential. Again, residential being the most restrictive environment is the last place that we look to place students. We're always looking to have them in the least restrictive for as long as possible.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Things that we're looking at as we go into this budget cycle for FY24, obviously, our focus areas continue to be social-emotional achievement and technology, with the threat of communication going through all of those. So social-emotional, obviously increasing student supports. And year over year, we've talked about focusing on teacher wellness. That has come back to the forefront as we survive the years post-COVID and what that means for staff, you know, meeting students' needs where they're at, varying needs of students. And that gap has really grown over the past few years between what is arriving on the first day of school, what school readiness looks like, and really what we're asking our teachers to accomplish over the course of the day. As far as achievement, we're looking to expand our pathways program at the high school as we talked, and we'll talk a little bit in the next few minutes in the program of studies document, just adding the pathways that we talked about, the biomedical and the manufacturing and engineering, and then on the horizon, looking at the early childhood education and a couple others that were, that came up through the student interest survey. We have started the process of transitioning our literacy program at the elementary level to the pedagogy of the science of reading. That entails a materials purchase for the upcoming year. This year, the focus has been purely on professional development for our staff, but as we start to roll out the program into next year, there'll be materials associated with that. For the past several years, we've spent a lot of time balancing class sizes seven through 12. There were times where teachers at the middle school would have a class of 12, and then the next period have a class of 29. And we will continue to balance that as best as we can across the schedule as, and also looking at some of the feedback that we got when we had the roundtable associated with achievement as far as just what the elective schedule at the middle school is. You know, looking at our high school and some of our less popular electives and switching those out for things that are more popular, balancing some of our classes, looking at how we deliver our enrichment and strategies through science, ELA, and math at the high school. And as always, we're looking for additional special education and ELL supports. That need has grown over the past 10 years and continues to be growing. Technology, Brandon gave you guys a great overview when he presented the tech plan a few weeks back, but really continuing with the replacement schedule. We were so fortunate with the funds associated with the COVID pandemic to purchase thousands of devices here, but really, the work is in how do you keep those devices fresh and renewed? So continuing with the capital replacement schedule for our Chromebooks and our teacher devices, continuing the upgrades on our infrastructure, whether that's the wireless access points or our firewall. Brandon talked extensively about what the staffing levels that DESC recommends based off the number of devices that we have, and really trying to get, make some movement towards those levels because as he presented a couple weeks back, we are nowhere near where we should be as far as tech and support for the number of devices that we have here in the district. So what do we do over the next couple of weeks? So obviously, we're looking to solve for a deficit. Even if the chapter 70 number comes in, generally where it has been in the past, that's a minimal increase for us, usually a half a percent, so about $75,000. So that's clearly not going to balance our budget. You know, the town has been a great partner in this work the past several years and has always come to the table giving us as much as they possibly can. Last year, it was a million dollars. Even if they came to us with a million dollars, we still have a deficit to solve for. So what do we start looking at? Obviously, special education pre-buy is the first thing, as I spoke about. We always look at elementary class sizes first to see if there's any place where there was a bubble at one point that has kind of dissipated over the past couple of years to see if there's an easy reduction that we can make there. Staffing reductions are easier to make at the elementary level because you're talking about one specific grade in class. It's a little harder to say at the high school when you have like a, I can do one less section of Algebra I and one less section of physics, that's not the same teacher. So pairing it together, the high school's a little bit different, but the elementary school is really a straightforward process for us. We said we would take a look at the secondary schedule to see if there's any efficiencies that we can look at there. We've started to brainstorm a little bit about changing the elective model at the middle school to make it a little bit more open and less of the restrictive team approach so that we could get more students into some of the choices that they would like to make, which also takes a little bit of stress off the class size sections there. So looking at that, looking at the structure and the way we offer support, whether that's through BCBA's, ABAs, what we contract out, what we have in-house here, just taking a look to see if there's a more cost-efficient way to do what we're doing. Obviously, our least favorite thing to do is eliminate programs or lessen the level of student choice. But again, that is something as we get further into the cycle and we've exhausted all other options, we start to look at what would it look like if we didn't offer Latin or if we didn't offer something else at the middle school or high school, or even if we went to a shared specialist schedule at the elementary school, what would that look like? And then everyone's most favorite discussion of the year, the fuse discussion. That is really our only opportunity to generate revenue as opposed to propose a reduction. So we will have that lovely conversation as we get further into the process, and I look forward to that. The timeline for the process, obviously, this is the very beginning. So January, we're still waiting on the budget from the state. That is required to be out by the last Wednesday, which is coming up. And as we move into January, February, towards the end of this month, obviously, and then beginning that with February 7th, we'll start to give you department-level presentations. So teaching and learning will be on February 7th. Student services will be on the 14th, and we'll continue to go through those fine arts, technology, maintenance, athletics, all of kind of the big money items as we move through the process. The budget, subcommittee will begin meeting quite frequently to talk about some of the internal things that we've identified administratively that we'd like to explore to see what the appetite at the school committee would be for some of the reductions that we're looking at. As administrators, we'll still continue to build our priority-based budget. So as you get presentations from the different departments, there will still be a list of requests and asks. It's important to go through that process even if we're making a reduction to the budget. It's important that departments have goals, that they have a vision for where they want to be. And that's, the budget process is a vital step in... to be, and that's, this, the budget process of, process is a vital step in that. So we'll still be talking about, in a vacuum, if everything were great, what were teaching and learning like? And then when all of those are done, we put together a list of priorities, and we move forward to what administratively we identify as our level-one priorities. So the things that we absolutely inherently cannot imagine moving into the next school year without and present them as such. When we do that, we do give you a full list of all of the priorities that were presented over the course of the presentations, because there are times that something that we've rated as a level-two might be a level-one for you all, and we talk about what it looks like to switch those things. And it all leads up to town meeting on Tuesday, May 9th, where the town will vote for the budget. Again, the school department is a one-line budget part of the town budget. In your packet, I just gave you elementary class sizes, because I feel like as school committee members, those are oftentimes what you get for questions the most. So this is currently what FY23 is. Just quickly looking at them, there isn't any glaring section that stands out where there's a, a class size that's super low or a class size that's super high that we'd be looking to add to. So as you roll them into next year, there's no easy reductions necessarily to take there, but we will continue to look at those. Kindergarten registration starts to ramp up through February and March. As you can see in the FY23 numbers, this kindergarten here at North is the largest kindergarten we've had in several years, which is a great sign. We are anticipating something closer to 60 for next year here at North, which would be the traditional three classes that we've had in the past, but this year, there is four classrooms here at North. So for those of you following, that is what we consider a bubble, so that fourth section will follow those kids as they work their way through the building.
That is it?
Couple of questions.
Yep.
Once I find them.
Yeah. Your sides are different than what's up there.
That's okay. I, I, yeah, I know.
We adapted.
You had mentioned earlier about sending the letter tied to the 14% increase. Did we get a, a response? And forgive me if I, I, you told me that and I forgot, but.
We did not. We did not get a response, but Tom Scott did send a global response to the MASSS list that they received from the breadth of emails that they got from having to report that to you.
Yes, please, thank you. Let's see. I know I had some more. I put little questions so I could find them, so bear with me. Those of you new to the meeting, you'll get used to the multiple questions that I've asked. Let's see. Also, last year, I believe, when we were going through the various asks from the different departments, you kept a rolling list of the potential dollar impact tied to this. Are you able to provide that to us again?
Absolutely.
As we do the review? Thank you. And I think that was, that was it. Thank you.
Two?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Super early. She's got a hard pointy, I promise.
She's formulating as we speak. No, and again, and for those out there in the audience, really, as Aaron shared, this is just the foundation, right? So we're basically looking at, what are the services we provided a year ago? What's it going to cost us in today's terms? And then what adjustments are we going to need to adjust, make? And to Aaron's point, we do want to go through this process because we don't want to stifle growth, stifle education. In the same spot, we have to take all that in consideration as we look to, to balance the budget, but it's important to continue to move the work on to make sure we're providing the best services we can for our students, so. To that end, was there any questions for the superintendent? Maureen?
Maureen, I feel like I haven't seen you in so long.
Hi, good evening. I know, it's been a couple. I'm sorry, I've missed you guys so much.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year, you too. Two questions if I might pose to you. First, you mentioned staffing levels and DESI recommendations around technology and staffing. I'd love to know more about what DESI recommends.
Sure.
And where we sit with their recommendation.
Right. So Brandon Hall, our technology director, presented, I think December 6th was the meeting he presented at. So that his presentation is underneath the minutes on the website, if you want to take a look at that. We're also having a series of roundtables next week associated with technology.
I saw that, yes.
So we can talk about it there, but DESE recommends per, I think it's 450 devices that you have one person associated with maintenance of those devices. We just have one technician here. So we have a director of technology, a software manager, a network manager, and a technology integrator. So we are woefully behind on the maintenance associated with devices according to the DESE standards, but I'm happy to, to send you the draft tech plan so you can see the actual breakout of the staffing requirements.
That's okay. I just want to know exactly, you know.
It's, it's on the maintenance that we're low.
It's relation to the, okay, thank you. And I'm just curious, is the, our commitment to technology, there's no turning back, right? I mean, it's, it's a done deal. We are committed to this capital expense.
It's a new way of learning, yes.
So, I mean, I think that's a, that's a philosophical question, Maureen, in the sense that, I mean, I've been here in Pembroke for 13 years. When I started here, there was the conversation, some of you will know at the time, that the leader in kind of educational technology was Alan November, and it wasn't one-to-one technology, it was one to the world. And so Pembroke was a one-to-the-world district. We didn't necessarily feel that every student needed a device in front of them. Obviously, with the opportunities associated with some of the funding from, from the CARES Act, we were able to purchase devices, and that made sense since kids were learning remotely. But I don't know as the leader of this district if I believe that elementary students need to be one-to-one or preschool students need to be one-to-one. I, I do see the value of it at the secondary level for students, absolutely, as we're rearing them to go off to, to further institutions of learning. But I do think there's a lot of work we need to do here, so, you know, I'll be candid and let you know that we do walk around school buildings pretty frequently, and I get frustrated, mostly from a parent perspective, I guess, if I see students on devices in elementary classrooms while they're here. I feel like when you're here, I want, I want you to be engaging with the teacher and not on a device. And there's often times where the, the device use is warranted. It's just the screen time, right? I worry about how much time our kids are in front of screens. And so though we have the, the means right now to have a device for every student, I don't think necessarily at the elementary level that needs to continue moving forward. And we did talk about with the last year of our SRF funds, which go through September of 2024, we did carve out some of those funds because the original Chromebooks we got will need to be replaced by then, but I'm not looking to replace them all, because I do think Chromebooks have a, a place in our elementary classrooms. For me, it's more of a center where you're working through, you know, you have one center, you're working with the teacher, another group of kids is working on a device, another group is working on a problem. Don't think everybody needs to be on a device at the same time.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're, you know, your philosophy and you're aware of, I think we've all been in the digital age now for some time, and there is concern that it could cause harm, so I'm glad that you're.
We're thinking about it.
Thinking of that, thank you. And if I might, a second question. Regarding, this is just a point I think of often, and I know it's been several years since the board decided regarding orchestra and band. And it used to be an elective that was part of the quarterly elective selections. And years ago, it was decided that, for many reasons and very valid reasons, I know the board was petitioned to make it a full-time, a full-year elective. And I'm just curious if maybe you could retrospectively look back at that decision and if it has decreased the participation in the enrollment with the students? Because I find as though you're forcing the child to, and I know this point was brought up when the decision was being made, but I'd like to know, looking back now, that you have a couple of years of data, if indeed our kids are not playing instruments anymore. I know the pandemic also probably smashed that as well, but I feel bad because I, I grew up, I played 12 years of an instrument, and it was a, a class, it was a course. I didn't have to choose between my electives and give that up. And I feel like the, the stigma that goes around sometimes with playing an instrument isn't kind of positive, and to just make one more hurdle, that the kid also has to choose to give up their electives. Anyways, I think I made my point. If maybe you, as a committee, could think about maybe at some point reconsidering or just looking at the data on that, I would appreciate.
I'll have Gwen include some of that historical information when she does the fine arts presentation. As a household, that was a lone trumpet during COVID, that was really tough. But I, I do think, you know, when, when we shifted, and I think you're talking specifically about the middle school, because that's where the kids are picking it for a year-long elective.
Yeah, they had to commit.
Right.
And, and my three kids gave up the piano.
Right. And I think at the time, when we made the case for, for why that was important, but I think, you know, having some, a few years' worth of data, maybe the, the conversation will be different, so absolutely happy to take on that.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Maureen. Anyone else before we move on? All right. Yeah, just so we have your name on record there. If you would just come up and say your name to the mic as well, just so we can get it into the minutes, that would be great. Thank you.
Just for anyone that's new here, the mic does not.
It doesn't.
Doesn't amplify your voice in the room. It's for PAC TV at home, so you don't sound any louder in the room. It's just for the folks that.
My name is Rhonda Rosano, and I'm not quite sure if this is the forum that I would actually approach you. We have a, an issue with the principal at the high school, and I'm not quite sure I brought it to Ms., Ms. Obie's attention, and I don't know if this is where we would direct it to you, Mrs. Obie, or?
So first, this has nothing to do with the maintenance of every budget, but, so no, the school committee is not able to discuss personnel in an open meeting without giving those folks the opportunity of notice of the intent to discuss.
So this would not be the forum to talk to you about this?
No, I'm happy to talk to you whenever you'd like. We, I just can't discuss an employee in public with you without giving them notice of the intent to discuss. Broadly, we've already discussed what is happening earlier. We spoke yesterday.
So this is not the forum that we could discuss it?
No. If you have an issue after we're done discussing it and you would like to discuss it with the school committee, you can send a, there's.
Okay.
To the school committee mailbox, a request to add it as an agenda item, but there is a legal piece associated with it when you're discussing personnel and performance.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear.
So there's a legal notice requirement when you're discussing personnel and performance, so you can make a request to have something added to the agenda, and then the chair would work with our legal counsel to figure out what the timeline is for that and how that discussion would happen in a public session.
Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name's Don Bryant. A, a question on the DEI working group, the notes that were to be, continue to be submitted. Obviously, I know you're going into working groups, I assume, or subcommittees, whatever you call them, maybe. So that might be a little bit more of a challenge to do, to do notes, but, but I'm completely lost on what's happening. And the point of the, keeping the notes was to keep us informed and up to date. So could you, could you address that for us, please?
Sure. So before I do that, I just want to reiterate, so the way the agenda works is that we're in the middle of the superintendent's report that has five items articulated that we're going to cover. It's not necessarily a public comment to bring up every item that you want to discuss. Super easy here, happy to kind of hit things as they go along, but just for formality's sakes, these, none of the topics that we're talking about right now have anything to do with the superintendent's report. Just putting that up there.
Have nothing to do with what?
The superintendent's report, which is the part of the agenda that we're in right now.
Oh, is that, am I in the wrong place?
No worries.
It's okay. We'll address, yes.
Happy to do it. So the DEI subcommittee met January 5th, 1st, 5th?
Nope.
First Wednesday.
Fourth.
No.
Subcommittee?
No, our, our working group met.
Worked.
Sorry. The larger working group met.
Larger group met.
And those minutes have been put together and circulated amongst the members to be posted on the website, so.
They should be on there any.
Okay, so it's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming.
Okay.
As you stated, it was a little bit more challenging because there were all the different committees, so pulling it all together was, just took a little longer.
Yeah, I know when we did, when they had the DEI committee for the town, they had four subcommittees. And keeping up with what was going, and of course, the subcommittees kept minutes. And so you could go through and read what was being considered in a timely fashion.
And they did for us as well. I just have to.
Okay, got you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So if there are no further questions on the.
On anything, so far.
On the budget situation, we will move on with the agenda.
So the next thing under my report is consideration of a first read and approval of policy IKF. So that is credit, credit status and graduation requirements. You'll see in your packet and what was sent to you electronically is that two years ago, we made an adjustment to the Program of Studies, just under Aster 2, where it says, "Students must pass Biology and Chemistry or Physics." To add another option for folks, not all of our students are, you know, wildly successful in chemistry, and we wanted to give them another option. That changed two years ago, and as we were going through the, the Program of Studies this year, we realized that the policy associated with that wasn't updated at the time, which is why I'm asking you for a first read and approval, which requires that you waive policy BGB, which is the two-read policy at the school committee, in order to approve that change so that we can align the policy that you have for credit status to align with the Program of Studies.
Just curiosity, did that change the, like adding that, did that change how many kids, like what kids chose what, like the quality of kids choose Physics instead of Chemistry?
I don't know that it, so sometimes in this, tho, those disciplines in particular, it's teacher sometimes specific. You know, students are excited to have blank for, years ago was, I can't wait to have Mrs. Porter for Chemistry, right?
Right, right.
And so I think some of that has to do with, I think we would probably need more than one year to figure out whether or not opening it to, or Physics, you know, kept more kids engaged in a science pathway or not. But I think that the first year, I don't know, there was a huge difference for kids.
Okay.
I know I like Physics more than Chemistry.
Good to know.
With that, do I have a motion to approve the first read and approval of policy IKF, credit status and graduation requirements?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Next in your packet, you have a honkin' copy of the full redline version of the Program of Studies.
Light reading?
Just light reading if you can see later.
I worked my way through it a little bit.
The document on top is just a summary of the changes that we've talked about in the past. All of the other edits to the document are minor. As we've discussed before, Mark fancies himself an English major, and over the past five or six years, has really deleted commas and added semicolons, and a lot of that work has already been done, so there's not a lot of grammatical changes to the document, but there are a handful of spacing issues and whatnot that are corrected. But the, the real changes are the new course proposals that we have listed here on top, as well as the handful of the other changes that we talked about when we first presented it in December, including the, the change to the senior seminars, pairing them for ease of scheduling for students, you know, portfolio prep, changing it from CP to honors, and the new course proposals that we've discussed. Again, just a reminder that these are just published in the Program of Studies. Courses are run based off of student interest, so if students don't select these courses, we obviously wouldn't be running them with nobody.
Questions for Aaron on this before we move to a vote? All right, with that, I, do we have a motion to accept the second read and approval for PHS's Program of Studies, the new course proposals?
So moved.
Motion and second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, the ayes have it.
Next you have for consideration of approval, a surplus request from North Pembroke Elementary School. These are mostly, um, math workbooks, um, and, and social studies workbooks that have been in closets here for a bit. Obviously, when you deem something surplus, it gives us the ability to dispose of it in the best manner possible. First, obviously, we try to sell them back to the publisher. Nobody's buying these back in particular. Um, we do offer them to the library. Um, a couple of years back, David had asked that we offer some of them to some of the Appalachia service project schools, so we, we do some of that work. And then, you know, worst case scenario, they're recycled. Um, but you deem it surplus and then we figure out the best way to, um, to either have someone make use of it or to dispose of it.
With that, do we have a motion to approve the surplus?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The last thing in my report is, uh, overnight out-of-state field trip request for AP government to go to Washington DC next. It's next March.
March of twenty-three? March twenty-fourth, dude, twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-four.
It's supposed to be next March.
Next, so this is supposed to be.
It's supposed to be twenty twenty-four, Mike, that's like three weeks away.
I was gonna say.
I know, nope, nope, nope. March twenty twenty-four. So again, this is so that they can gauge interest with students and then once the details are, um, fine-tuned, it will come, it will come back to you, so this is just conceptual.
Okay, given that the different date is on it, can we approve it as modified to twenty twenty-four?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure that's kind of in the record, so I know that's dumb, but.
No, it's important.
Somebody looked at it, they think they were.
They were having to go soon.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess this goes without question, following our discussion about the Florida trip, we're gonna vet the companies and everybody that goes through this process. Just to make sure.
Uh, and they did note in there the cost of the trip and they, they said, but it depends on cost of flights, hotels, and other various accommodations, so it, you know, we.
Cause I did see there was a local connection to that.
I think it's also important, we make it clear, like that the teachers and nurses are included in that price.
Are covered, yeah, part of that process.
Right, so just to, to follow up on that, a, a nurse attends the trip, if the student attending the trip needs a nurse, so we gotta get the list of students first.
So you may or may not need one.
Right, exactly, right.
I mean, I would think it's obvious, but some people didn't.
Right, right, so chaperones, teacher chaperones aren't included in the price and whatnot.
Sounds good. Do we have a motion to approve field trip as modified?
So moved and seconded.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Erin. So our, as, before we get into part two of our meeting tonight, um, let's see, our February dates.
So February seventh is our next meeting. Um, as I said a few minutes ago, Mary Beth will be, excuse me, going over the teaching and learning budget, but, um, for the first hour or so of that meeting, Tom Hickey, who is the superintendent for Social and VOTEC, will be joining us just to talk with you all a little bit about what the process to join looks like. Um, that timing coincides wonderfully with the opening of the warrant, um, for a town meeting, so if you are so inclined to move forward an article to explore a regional agreement with Social and VOTEC, we'd be in line perfectly timed and once.
Great. So those are two big hitters and then are we, let's see, the twenty-first?
And then the fourteenth.
No, fourteenth, we said.
Twenty-first, twenty-first is a school vacation meeting.
Right, with school vacation, we said that.
On the fourteenth, Representative Cutler and Senator Moran will be joining you, um, to have the discussion that we annually have with them. Um, if there's anything you all want me to get to their aides ahead of time for them to be prepared to talk about, I'm happy to do that. Um.
Could we include that fourteen percent increase?
Yep, but generally, they give you an update on chapter seventy funding and kind of where that's going and, you know, the budget.
We should have all that from the state by then, yeah.
Yes, we'll have at least the governor's budget by then.
And maybe ask if there are, you know, as I was reviewing last year's questions for the appointees. When we were talking about the chapter seventy formula, um, you know, if they can give us any updates on any discussion tied to that, and also, um, they're, they're coming to talk about the, the issue, the redis, that one bullet, so I, I think that's everything. I'm working from memory, which is always dangerous.
To come to talk about, um, what were you gonna say?
With the VOTEC situation.
No, they're not coming to, we don't.
But can we ask them about that?
We can ask them about the change in the legislature, which is, you know, um.
Right.
What we had talked about before. They don't necessar- we don't, you know, we don't necessarily need to partner with them to talk about regionalization with Social and VOTEC. There's not a lot that they offer to that.
Yeah, more of the issue that kind of prompted a problem.
Really, the change in the, in the moment process, the chapter seventy-four enrollment process, absolutely.
Just to kind of help get us all on the same plane as from, as far as the, you know, any other legislation coming down the pike that may seem impactful for a particular area, but we really need to be on the radar for how it could.
Right.
Have unintended consequences for smaller districts like us.
And I'm, and I'm sure they're feeling the unintended con- I, we can't be the only district complaining to them about it, so I feel like.
Exactly, exactly. So that'd be helpful and, you know, to give them some heads up so that they can kind of give us, you know, the, the background of how that decision came to be made and the types of discussions, it just.
And even what they're hearing from their colleagues on the, on the Hill and what other districts are doing as well.
Yeah, for other districts, exactly. I just think it would help to, you know, to be educated a little bit on, on that process. Uh, you know, full disclosure, I don't watch the legislative decisions routinely.
You don't have all that time.
Try to read about them, but, you know, I just don't tune in, so, um, if I can learn, I think that helps. If, you know, we can offer feedback. Some of the side effects, that's great.
All right. All right, so that's our agenda. Do we need to look ahead to, are we looking at another one after or both our?
So we'd go back to the first and the third in March. Um, we had originally proposed three meetings in March, but depending where we are, um, in the budget, we can, we can revisit that. I think March third would be.
Will we have, what budget components are we touching on on the fourteenth?
The fourteenth is students are services.
Is it, I mean, I know this is, last year we had, uh, Mike had us put like a, a list of upcoming topics.
Yeah, I, I can do that. I just wasn't here when this went out.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that.
Well, we'll keep a running list, including when that fee discussion is, you can mark your calendar.
It's our favorite.
So then we've got a meeting on, again, with the seventh on, of March, and then we're back to our first and third, so the twenty-first, correct?
Right, I think we had, um, had you put the fourteenth on there just in case, right, cause we were trying to work backwards from town meeting to make sure we can get everything done, so I think in March, we had you reserve the three.
To have enough weight.
The seven, fourteen, and twenty-one, okay.
All right, so we're gonna be busy.
Yep.
Sounds good. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved and seconded.
Yeah, sorry, Maureen.
Can I ask one more thing? Maybe if Representative Cutler comes, I guess, will there be an open comment for public to speak with whom?
Oh, yeah, Maureen, absolutely.
Um, cause I, I mean, I'd like to, um, I mean, I know we're moving forward from the pandemic, but I, I have issues that Desi had the power to mandate masks on our school district, and I would like to know if there's anything that we can do to work towards preventing that power in the future, um, from us not being able to make that decision. Um, I know we were in the storm of it when it was happening, but it, we're moved out of it and maybe we can be a little retrospective to prevent that from happening and having that authority removed from you in the future. Maybe there's legislation that he can move forward on our behalf? Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen.
So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
With that, we will reconvene at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Today's Tuesday, January twenty fourth. It's a joint meeting with the school committee and I call the select board to order and I invite the school committee to do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to call the school committee back for our meeting as well.
Very good, thank you. So we are here to fill a vacancy on the school board. It is a joint vote between the select board and the school committee. We have three candidates before us this evening and we will begin with two-minute opening statements from each candidate and I'll just use the order that's on my agenda for no other reason. So, Mr. Michael Quinn, opening statement, please.
Sure thing. I just wanted to start by thanking you all for having me here tonight and giving me the time to talk with you and to interview for this position. I do really appreciate it. If you all know, my name is Mike Quinn. I've lived in Pembroke about eight and a half years now. I live here with my wife. We moved down here from Waymouth because we really thought Pembroke would be a great place to start a family, which we've now done. We have a daughter who's almost three as well as a newborn son who just born December first. They're probably the reason I'm here tonight as I really think Pembroke Public Schools is going to be a part of my life for the next seventeen or eighteen years, however long, if I do the math right. And I want to be involved in my children's education. I think this is a great way to do that beyond the school committee. I think I have some skill, a certain skill set that I bring or that I could bring to a school committee that I think could be helpful. I know in my, in my role as a financial planner, I recently passed certified financial planner exam. I have experience building budgets for people. I've, I've experienced developing long-term financial plans as well as developing and building relationships. In addition to that, when we were in Waymouth, I served on the Board of Trustees at my condo association, which was about a hundred forty unit condo association for, served for about four years as the treasurer. So I was active in developing the budgets for that. Also had to have some tough discussions with the tenants when we had certain capital repairs that needed to be done, as I'm sure you guys can kind of, or all of you can kind of understand that. But yeah, again, I appreciate you having me here. I think that, I think that, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I hope I'm able to articulate, you know, why I would fit in well on the board and I look forward to the interview.
Very good, thank you. And Adam Murphy.
Thank you again for everyone for having me here this evening. My name is Adam Murphy. We, my wife and I moved to the town of Pembroke in twenty nineteen, actually closed on our house in December of twenty nineteen and then the world shut down. So we were shortly, we moved here shortly before the pandemic hit and we have a six-year-old daughter who's just turned six and she's at the Bryantville School and we have a one-year-old at home. As my, as the previous applicant has said, you know, I want to be here to be able to drive the school system, but I'm not coming in with an agenda. You know, I don't, I don't have a personal agenda of what I want to see accomplished, but I want to be able to participate and be able to drive the, the education program in the, in the town of Pembroke, to drive more young families to move to the town and to want to be able to engage in the town and, and, you know, be able to have the best school system or know one of the best school systems in the state. If I can somehow, you know, affect that change, then I would, I would love to be a part of that, a part of that process.
Thank you very much. Matt Files.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking your time out to be here and inviting me to be part of this process. I am a new resident to Pembroke, new and old, I guess I should say. I started kindergarten in this building. I don't want to age myself. Traveled around the country a little bit with my family and when it came time for my wife and I to settle down, Pembroke was high on our list and here we are. We moved into town in twenty twenty, kind of in the middle of the pandemic, which was difficult, but we came here with our two boys to raise them here because we thought this was an excellent place to raise our, our children. I am a professional educator. I've been in education for the last twelve years, most of my professional career, and it came out of a desire to give back. I wouldn't be here in front of you today if it weren't for educators in my life when I was younger and I've, I've used that kind of every day throughout my professional career to make sure that I'm providing opportunities for young people every day. I believe it's important for people in education and those that support education through committees and select boards to make sure that we're working with all stakeholders and listening to all stakeholders, to be able to provide the best possible education we can for the children in our community and such brings me here today. I also am not here with an agenda. I don't plan on running for election. I'm not gathering signatures. I'm here simply to be an option for the town, for the committee, for the select board and bring my expertise here, my experience to hopefully help through the budget process and through the school year.
Very good, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to the questioning portion of the meeting. We'll question each candidate one at a time jointly from school committee to select board and back and forth. And just so the candidates and the public know, some members may not have a question. Their question may have already been asked, so take nothing from that. So we'll begin with Lance.
Thank you. Starting with.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go same as the agenda. Mike, please.
Okay. Mike, you, you mentioned that your little ones are coming into the community and obviously not quite yet part of the school system. What sort of school system do you envision for your children?
Similar to what Adam said, I really want the, us to have a great school system. I believe that we should, I guess you want to say full service, as in we should have a lot of programs for special needs children. We should have a lot of programs for, we should have a lot of programs for voc tech, which I think we're missing right now. I think we just need an entire, I think we need an entire spectrum of services for the school. I think we need to have a culture in the school as well that promotes anti-bullying, a culture that promotes, I guess inclusiveness, I guess is the word. I know it's a buzzword now, so it's trying to, you know, worth saying that, but, and I think a, a, a culture of community service as well. I really think that, you know, I went to B C High for a short time. They stress community service. I think that's something that is, is very important for kids and, and I want academics to be top-notch. I want us to move up in the rankings and I think I want to help be a part of, you know, since COVID came along, schools all around have suffered somewhat and I want to make sure that we have a, a, have a great, a great turnaround, I guess you would say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tracy.
Hi, Mike.
Hey, how you doing, Tracy?
Was there a specific issue that prompted your application?
Yes, I would say there was, for one, it's the, the lack of vocational education now that's available in Pembroke. I think, and I have no idea if that's the path my kids would go down, but I do want every child to have that option. It's, you know, it's an unfunded mandate by the state and we have to figure out a plan to get that option back for the children in Pembroke. And it sounds like, from everything I've, I've seen, it sounds like the school committee is behind that. It sounds like the select board is behind that. Town manager is behind that. I also want to bring to attention though that this will take a couple of years to get done and in the meantime, there are kids now in sixth, seventh, eighth grade that will miss out on that option. So I'd really love to do is, if I get on the school committee and if I don't actually, work with you guys and figure out a way to fill that gap as well and that's going to take some creativity.
Thank you. And Suzie.
This job kind of, well, it obviously involves a lot of speaking with community members and you talked briefly in your introduction about some difficult conversations that you had tied to the condo associate. Can you elaborate a little bit on that, how you navigated, say, particularly confrontational situations?
Yeah, I mean, we had, it's been a while since I've been on the condo association, but.
You could, you could, you don't have to be specific because I don't want to divulge anybody's secrets, but give me an idea of how you navigate that.
Yeah, you have to be open with the people. You have to, you know, when I was on the association, there were people, people that showed up to meetings when they were mad about something. So they're going to be mad, you have to listen to them, let them get it off their chest and actually pay attention to what they say and address those concerns. A lot of, what people showed up for and were mad about was had a lot to do with raising condo fees for, for repairs that needed to be done and that's their money. You have to understand that and take their point of view that, whoa, I'm getting charged an extra X amount a month and you can't get mad at them for that. Like that's, you know, put yourself in their shoes and understand what they're saying and just try to listen as much as you can. I mean, there's going to be some people, you're not going to please them. They're going to be mad just because they're mad and you have to understand that.
Thank you. And John?
Thank you. All right, Mike. My thing is because you're more of a budget person and I want to go towards that avenue. How would you, if you were able to get on this board and be appointed tonight, how would you work with your colleagues and superintendent on advocating for budgetary constraints that we do have here in our town with chapter seventy and other examples you might have that you're wondering why? You're a budget guy, so how can you take over, say, Mr. Troppiano, who's a big numbers guy too, on replacing his knowledge and his whereabouts of what the school is about?
I'm not going to be able to replace Troppiano's, you know, all of his knowledge. He's, he was a school committee member for over twenty years, twenty-two years, something like that. I think that would be a team effort on everyone's part. We'd have to, we'd have to, you know, all work together. As far as, as far as budgeting, I mean, number one, first thing I'd want to do if I was appointed tonight is I want to make an appointment to meet with Erin and go over this year's, this year's budget. I've gone through and looked at some of the past budgets and what I see is I've, I've noticed that the state fund, the, the, the part of our budget of the state funds, the percentage is getting lower and lower and we need to figure out what that, why that is. And the other issue that we're facing in this, in this town, a big issue that we're facing in this town is some of our non-discretionary costs are rising faster than the rate of inflation or rising faster than the increases in our budget allow. I wish I could say I have an answer tonight to deal with some of that stuff. That would be, that would require me really meeting with Erin and working together. I think Lance as a, as a chair would be involved as well, but it's going to take, it's, it's going to take some, some planning on our part because also the town is facing, the school system is facing some needed repairs to the schools. I don't know if I should say needed repairs, but talking to Erin before, you know, these buildings are old. They recently were remodeled, but that's going to be something that's going to be, have to be talked about maybe ten years down the road and, you know, there are some issues facing us right now and I think that, you know, I'd work closely with Erin, learn as much as I can from her as quick as I can, get up and running and go from there. And what they need, and we'd be, obviously need work with the select board as well on some of this budget because we're, we're all in this together, a town meeting.
Thank you. And Sue?
Well, first of all, I just want to say I've been in all, where all three of you are sitting right now and I know how like, you know, intimidating it can be and I wasn't picked at the time. I mean, obviously Lance did a great job, so I have no complaints, but, but I'm here now and I just want to say thank you to all three of you because, you know, I know you're, it's a volunteer position and you're like putting yourself in the spotlight with these questions. But with that said, my question is, is there one thing that you would like the school committee to do differently or better and if so, what would that be?
Wow, that's a good question and I honestly hadn't really thought about that, what the school committee could do better. I think you guys do a good job of, of trying to be open, just maybe advertise meetings more in the stuff you have. Like I think, I think advertise a lot of stuff, the programs that the school is doing right now for, for parental outreach. I think Erin does a great job organizing and Mary Bath do a great job organizing these roundtable discussions. I don't know how much they're promoted, but I think that's something that parents should really be, parents should be participating in and I think they should be made more aware of stuff like that. I mean, I think that would be the one thing that I could think of that would need to be, or I'd want to correct. Could I get just back to John's question really quick too? Because I, there was a point I wanted to make that I, I started, I started rambling and I didn't get to what I wanted to say and it's been bugging me. And as far as you said, the budgeting, I think what also what we do when we budgeting, when we're budgeting. Sorry, I am nervous. Is that we need to figure out what are the needs and what are the wants and then, you know, put them in order. Then you prioritize what's the most important needs, number one, number two, number three, and work from there and see what you can do in a given amount of time. And I think that's what school committee needs to do over the next couple of year, over the next couple of months as we're doing this budget for this year as well as for, you know, going forward, long-term planning. Just figure out what our wants and needs are, prioritize them and, and really go from there.
Thank you. And Steve?
Yes, Mike, hello.
Hey, how you doing, Steve?
So, I mean, one thing, just to some of the other point, those points that were made, I think it's really awesome that we have all really well-qualified people, professionals in their field that are willing to volunteer their time for the town. I think regardless of who.
Thank you.
I think regardless of who gets picked, I would really hope that, you know, all of you would still want to be involved in the town in some way because there's a lot of needs that need to be filled by professional people, people with a lot of experience and, you know, management, education, et cetera, so. you know, management, education, et cetera. So, just I want to say that real quick. Apart from that, one thing that I can't speak for everybody, that I'm looking for a little bit, that I think is really important, is stability and commitment, especially on the school committee. Um, so one question that I have is, uh, Mike, as you may know, uh, the appointee to the seat will serve out the remaining term, about three to four months remaining, upon which the seat will be up for special election this May, lasting for one year before needing to run again next year for the full three-year term. In what ways have you already committed or planned to commit to this seat for the foreseeable future?
Well, there's a few things. First of all, I'm part of the, uh, the DI Working Group. I've been to every meeting. I've been an active participant in every meeting as well. Um, I've been attending school committee meetings regularly for the past several months. I've been a regular here. Um, I've gone around. I've, I've spoken with everyone in the school committee by now multiple times. I've met with, um, with Erin as well and, and discussed the role and what it would entail. And, um, on top of that, you know, I, I've already pulled papers for, uh, for the election, uh, this spring. So I want to, you know, I'm committed to this. This is what I want to do. Um, yeah, and it, and it means, you know, I think, like you said, we're all good candidates. It, but, you know, I want to just show to you that I'm really committed. I think I've shown that now.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. And Becky?
So, um, thank you guys all for being here. I, I, my question really is wanting to know what you, you could bring in the way of knowledge about education, what kind of educational background, um, and about what you want to see in education as a priority.
So, you know what? It's funny. I was asked this the other day, and I'm going to be flat-out honest with you. I've never worked in education. Um, I've, you know, I went through college, um, and I recently just, you know, finished that, the, the CFP, you know, exam, which required me to take seven courses with an exam at the end. But, um, that's something I'm going to have to get up and running on. You know, I've gone through and read, read through the minutes over the past several years, several years worth of minutes. Um, but what I would prob, what I would do to get up and running on that, learn more about educate, of the educational side of it, is I'd probably meet with, again, Erin, probably Jeff, Steve Lorenzo, go through what, you know, what their day-to-day is like, what are, what are some of the programs in the school that are priorities, some of the services that the school provide that are extremely important. And I don't, my children aren't in school yet, so I'm not getting the actual, you know, the day-to-day experience that some of the other applicants here may already be getting. You know, where I'd be, as I said, where I would be, um, helpful, hopefully, would be on the budgeting part of it, the financial side.
Thank you. So, uh, each member has had a chance to ask a question, um, but I want to reach out to both boards to see if there's a second question that a member may have. Uh, just be cognizant of time and fairness to the other candidates. Are there any second?
I just have a quick question. Uh, what is your availability for sub-meetings?
Uh, so, in my job, I pretty much set my hours, so I can be very flexible.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no further questions for Mr. Quinn?
One more, actually. One more quick one. Um, I know that you're not going to have experience in the special education system when you have no educational background, but besides attending the school committee meetings, how else could you address the parents' concerns?
I'm actually glad you asked that, because I meant to say this and didn't get a chance to. Um, I know you do a lot of work with CPAC. I'd love to go to some of those meetings, and I could actually answer questions from the parents as well, learn a little bit more about that stuff. Um, I would also, you know, to learn more on the special needs side, obviously, I'd be with Jeff, Steve Lorenzo, and again, go through what, what she thinks of the priorities as well. And, um, you know, I, you organize tons of stuff. I think, I would love to, I would love to, you know, join in with you on some of that stuff. If you actually say I'll have a school committee member here to answer questions. And if I get on, I know I'd be new, so, you know, do the best I could.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to questions for Adam Murphy. And we'll use the same order.
Thank you. Adam, welcome.
Thank you.
I, I love the fact that you use the word term "drive" a lot as a captain. I'm sure that's,
Yes.
comes natural to you. That's good. With that, um, and we are in the, in the just beginning stages of our budget season. Um, as an incoming potential member, what would you sort of prioritize and, and how would you help us process what should be valued and what should be prioritized in this upcoming season?
We'd want to make sure that our teachers are, are well-paid, that we, we have the right supplies for the schools, and that all of our main core needs are, are taken care of. Um, and then, you know, as, as, as Mike said, we want to move on to any wants that we have. We'd want to prioritize those wants. But we'd want to make sure that we focus to all of that, to where it needs to be, into the education of the children. That the kids can feel safe when they come here, the teachers can feel safe when they come here, and they can go home, and everybody goes home. Um, as we say in the boat business, everybody goes home with all 10 fingers and all 10 toes. So, um, you know, and it's a, it's a safe environment for everyone to be here. That's, that's ultimately what I would be at.
So we're looking at, we got the early numbers, we're looking at $2 million hole right now, right? And that's just zero fun, that's zero, uh, balanced programming based on inflation and everything else that comes with that. Um, is there situations you've had to make similar difficult decisions with work and share how that process goes for you?
We certainly have had to. COVID obviously really detriment on us. Um, when COVID hit, we, uh, 95% of, um, and we were shut down, which is, uh, we, and we were in the process of being bought out by, uh, we were owned by a small family company, bought out by a corporation, which is what saved us.
Excuse me for a minute. I, I'd ask everyone to maybe turn up their internal volume to close to their outdoor voice, or in simpler terms, speak loud like me, the Jersey Girl.
Yeah.
Some in the audience may be having difficulty hearing you, so I'd ask you to really project because what you're saying is very important.
Yeah, absolutely. So,
Thank you.
As I was saying in 2009, in 2020, when the pandemic hit, we, we furloughed 95% of our staff, and we kept a very skeleton crew on to keep the boats kind of floating, right? For, for lack of a better term. Um, and when we had to bring it back, we had to bring it back very slowly. Um, we had to know, we could only bring back certain programs at a time. Um, and one of our main concerns was our contracts with the MBTA. We had to satisfy that. We brought on that staff, and we kept our costs minimal, as minimal as we could, um, with just the limited cash flow that we had coming in, and then we were able to kind of expand on that. So we've been able to expand back to almost, uh, 2019 numbers in the last three years by adding services every year and subtracting, um, subtracting services at the same time, because we can't get the staff in the door. So we have, we have the same issues that, you know, many other businesses in town, many other businesses across the state are having, where we can't get the staff in. So we have to know to cut services. And it's tough. It, it's the worst decision in the world to make is to say to somebody, I can't run that service because we can't, we can't provide it. Um, a perfect example for us is the Codzilla. Everybody knows that boat. It's the big speedboat, runs through the harbor, 40 knots. It causes, it wreaks havoc. We couldn't run it the first year. We got it back, which is a fantastic product. Um, we do many good things with that boat, but we couldn't run it. And it was devastating to not only the staff that's worked on the boat for many years, but to all of us as managers and directors that we, we couldn't do it, because it brings in so much cash flow. So you just, we just, it's, it's difficult to make those decisions, but it has to be made. And you have to get to it at the end of the day. It's, it's a business decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy?
Hi, Adam.
Hi, Tracy.
You're appointed to school committee tonight. What would your first order of business priority be?
What the board has been up to over the last, uh, the last year, uh, where they're heading in the direction, and then, and then getting on board with what's going on with the budget, and trying to figure out how we can, uh, get everything figured out to, to cover all of our expenses, cover all of our, uh, wants and needs, and, and figure out how we can do the best that we can to provide for, uh, the students of, of the program.
Thank you. Suzie?
Thank you. For coming, I didn't say thank you to everyone earlier. Thank you for coming to do this. Um, of the current items that the school committee is now focusing on, our budget, um, the in-depth discussions we've had on the vocational needs that we'd like to have for our students, um, the technology and the challenges that that presents, support service upgrades tied to that, um, you know, the, the long and lingering impacts of COVID, um, which of these types of issues that are really kind of on our table regularly really speaks to you and, and is something that you feel your skill set could attack?
You know, as Mike said, the VOTEC thing is a very, uh, is a very big piece of the puzzle. And it's not the only piece of the puzzle. I won't, I won't, I won't deny that. But, um, to give the opportunity to be able, for a, a student to be able to fall into the field that his, you know, his mother or his father was in and was able to, um, you know, to, uh, to, to follow in their footsteps, for lack of a better term. But, um, that, that would be the thing I'd want to focus on. You know, that would be my main thing. And I think that my access to people in the marine industry alone could help that. Um, we have, we have a lot of connections with different, uh, different programs, different schools, uh, different maritime schools. Not only that, not only here, uh, we're owned by a worldwide corporation, so we're able to kind of branch out. Um, and we have our own in-house, actual in-house, uh, we call it Hornblower University. So we have our own in-house program, and we train everybody in. So I have a, I have a long background in training, and I think that with that VOTEC, uh, aspect of it, we could, we could be looking at a, a connection there.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. And John?
Uh, since, just like, uh, Mike, with no educational background, so I'm kind of stealing Becky's thunder from the first question. Uh, how, with no educational background in that way, and more of, I guess, the service industry that you're in,
Yep.
How would you work on, working with your colleagues to advocate for Pembroke, for how they do things, how they're under testing rule, and bringing your, how am I going to say this? Uh, your experiences to like, to exemplify, like, the committee?
Okay. Um, so I, I think the best way for me to answer that is to say that, you know, I'm not going to know the answer to every single thing right off the bat, but I would want to work with my colleagues to learn, um, and collectively as a team, to be able to come up with those decisions. And I think that, um, you know, some of the, uh, some of my experiences, past experiences, um, you know, as a, as, as working as a deckhand all the way up the chain, you know, you learn, you learn different things as you go on in this job, um, and in my job, my current job. Um, you know, and I learn, uh, something new every day. So I'm always open to learning, and I, I'm never, um, you know, I always want to make sure that we're, we're showing the best that we can. Um, so I would work with, with all the other committee members to make sure that we were, we were doing the best by the town, um, and advocating for the, for the town through the state, um, and working with the select board, the finance committee, um, and all that, so that we made sure that we were, um, we were doing the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Sue?
I'm going to ask you, um, the same question I asked Mike. Um, what, let me read it. Um, is there one thing that you'd like, like the school committee to do differently or better? And if so, you know, would that be, and how would you do it?
I have a little experience with school committees. Student, I'm dating myself here. When I was a nice, to the, uh, to the school committee, and one of the things that we had done, this is way back before social media, was that we, you know, we, um, we posted our minute, they posted the minutes of the meeting to actually see the minutes. And I think by actively involving, or allowing the students to be actively involved in that, they, they are able to feel like they're participating, what happens inside the town. Participation from the, the student side.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes, Adam, hello?
Hello.
So, one thing, just to kind of piggyback what I said earlier about, about all you guys who are interested, one thing that kind of stands out that's interesting to me is, you know, we've got a financial professional, we have an operations professional, and we have an educational professional. So it's like such a perfect spread of different things that could fill a gap that, uh, that the committee needs. So I think that's great. Um, I'm actually an operations guy myself, um, so I can appreciate, uh, pain that comes with that, you know, most definitely. Um, but any institution needs operational capabilities, needs to kind of tighten the bolts on things, needs to figure out how things are clicking together, make sure they work together well. Um, the one question I would ask for you is, uh, in what ways do you believe that your skills and experience will best help Pembroke schools and students?
Major parts of my job is to build relationships, right? Um, I spend time building relationships with the, you know, the local city, city agencies, town agencies, um, state, federal, obviously with the Coast Guard. We deal with the Coast Guard on a regular basis, so I, I build those relationships with, with the Coast Guard. So I think building relationships with the, uh, the students of the school system, uh, the school committee members themselves, uh, the town, the town members, um, and, and the faculty, uh, and the staff of the school.
Thank you. And Becky?
So, um, so when you're trying to differentiate, differentiate the programs that are needed versus those that are wanted, you know, making the kind of difficult decisions you had to make, um, with Boston Harbor during the shutdown, how would you go about making those kind of decisions in a school system that you may not know that well, right? That you just, you're, you're, your oldest is six years old. So how would you, you know, how would you start to go down that path in those decisions?
Why, um, why we needed to cut the program, if it needed to be cut, or why we needed to keep it? He can, from another pro, the moving parts of it.
Can I just follow up on that?
Yes.
When you're talking about moving things around, I assume that's a shell game that you've had to play.
Mm-hmm.
But do you work on the budgets at all at Boston Harbor? I, I didn't get that, that didn't come across in your resume. I was just looking for it again.
Yeah, no, um, it's actually, it's, it's, I believe, provided my job, this newer role, um, where I manage, uh, staff during the, the year-round staff, and that inflates to 557, I think we were at last year, uh, staff. But we also have to run an operating budget for every piece of equipment we own, which is 42, but we own 42 vessels, uh, including two dinner boats and, uh, the Codzilla, four high-speed cats. And, uh, we have to maintain all of our contracts with the MBTA. We have to maintain all of our fuel costs. Uh, we're constantly looking for, you know, who's got the, the better deal on the fuel for us. I mean, we, we buy over a million gallons of fuel a year. So we need to, we're always looking for, uh, for all those answers. So we do, we do do that, you know, occasionally we'll move money from one department to another just so, because we need to, we have a shortfall in one department, but the other, the other has, they had a little leftover money, so we'll move it over here.
Thank you. Uh, are there any secondary questions from the school committee?
Yeah, just, uh, availability for sub-meetings.
Uh, I have a very flexible schedule.
You do?
Yeah.
Very good. Are there any secondary questions from the select board?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Same question I asked Mike. Uh, as you may know, the appointee to the seat will serve out the remaining term, about three to four months remaining, upon which the seat will be up for special elections. It may last for one year before needing to run again next year for the full three-year term. In what ways have you already committed or planned to commit to this seat for the foreseeable future?
I'm actually, um, it's, it's, we got into town, uh, to, to run for the seat this coming spring. And then, um, if I were appointed tonight, if I wasn't appointed tonight, or if I am appointed tonight, I'm still going to run for the seat in, in May, and then I will, I would run again in, uh, next year.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Uh, thank you, Adam. Uh, move on to questions for, uh, Matt Fyles. If you could just shift the mic over to him, please.
Lance, thank you. Welcome, Matt. Thanks for joining us tonight. So, obviously, looking at your background, uh, we, we talk about VOTEC, and that seems to be right up your alley, right? A lot of the work you do is a hands-on environment. So explain, is that a passion of yours? How, how can you help us support, uh, our vision, or how we continue to look to help our students in our district have that, those opportunities?
Sure. Uh, as I talked about briefly, my
Sure. As I talked about briefly in my opening, I, I'm a classically trained furniture maker, finished carpenter, who happened to graduate college in 2007 when our first recession hit, of my lifetime hit. And it was not easy finding work, especially high-end work. And so I found my way into education and I haven't looked back. And again, as I, as I talked about in my opening, a big part of that is being able to give back and give students the same opportunities that I had where someone, a teacher looked at me and said, I didn't feel like I fit the norm, right? I wasn't your standard reading, writing, arithmetic student, probably wasn't even a great student, to be honest. But there was a teacher that believed in me and said, if this is a passion of yours and you want to pursue it, I'm going to give you every opportunity you can. That's why I've been in education for 12 years, that's why I continue in education, and that's why I'm here today. I'm very familiar with the conversations you've all been having about vocational opportunities for students. It's not unique to Pembroke. It's, it's, in fact, I think every district on the South Shore is experiencing similar conversations. And unfortunately, there's no easy answer. And I think this is where school committees and districts need to be a little creative in how they're, they're servicing the needs of students. And so, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to sit in this seat tonight and moving forward, I, I'd love to engage in those conversations about how we can be more creative to provide those needs and avenues for students.
Thank you. Tracy?
Hi, Matt. I'm sure everyone had the vocational education question on for you. If that is not the primary reason that you chose to run, was there another specific reason that prompted you to apply?
Sure. I guess if there's one principle that I try to live by, it's to be of service to others. And I think I was probably paying a bill on the town website when I saw the posting and realized that I think I'm uniquely qualified for this position. And I thought that this would be my opportunity to step in, to fill a void, to help get the committee through, again, this, this budget season and this school year. And I, I'm truly a believer in public education. My, my, my day job is in education, my wife's an educator, it's all we talk about at home, especially the last couple of years during the pandemic. So it's, it's, I guess, both a lifestyle and a passion for me.
Thank you. And Suzie?
I was going to talk to you about the vocational piece, but I think we've, we've talked a little bit about that.
I can keep going.
I, I do have to comment that I thought it was, it was intriguing to me that you were employed by the Elliott School of Fine Arts and Applied Arts, the Duxbury School System, and the New England Casket Company, all at one time. So that's, that's where my question's going to come in from, because that's, that, to me, that's, it's linked but kind of unique, and that's a lot of multitasking. So can you talk to me about that time in your career where you were, it looked like, at least according to your resume, that, that there were overlapping time periods where you were doing all three?
So sure, I was young and didn't have children.
Okay.
Is that enough? Yeah.
But it's like navigating those multiple roles at one time. What, how do you think, having had that experience, how's that going to serve you in this world?
Well, I, I think one strength that I have is probably compartmentalizing, right? My day job is my day job and what I'm doing with my free time is, is separate. And it gets as much attention, equal attention, but also I, I think it's important that we're able to compartmentalize those things. And so at the time, I was teaching night classes in Jamaica Plain, adult ed. I was, I had been fully employed by the Casket Company, but I was kind of working as a consult for them because when I was given the opportunity to teach in Duxbury, I didn't want to just leave them high and dry, right? And so it was an opportunity for me to kind of stick with my vocational roots, you know, and multitask, I guess, and be able to serve kind of multiple houses. And it was important to me at the time to stick with all three because I believe so much in vocational options for students. I think we, we don't spend enough time asking students what they want to be when they grow up anymore. I think we spend more time measuring them against each other. And I think it's important that we don't lose that in education, that we don't give up the opportunity for a kid to dream about what they can be and what they can achieve on their own or with help. And so I think it's, it's always been a passion of my, well, I've always, I've always wanted to keep my finger on the pulse as far as the trades and vocations and making sure that we're not losing sight of what the goal of public education is, and it's to provide barrier-free access to appropriate education. And appropriate is different for every student. I think that's how one can measure success in a public school system.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. In your opening statement, you said placeholder. And that kind of got me thinking of, you want to be a placeholder for right now to be appointed, but are you willing to do as the other two candidates and try to run for the seat? Or are you just in for a couple of months just to make sure, you know, whatever issues coming up that you want to deal with?
Yeah, and I'll go back to my answer to Tracy's question of, you know, I, I really saw this as an opportunity to be of service, to be able to lend my ears, my voice when needed, my expertise and my background. And that's not to say that if, you know, I didn't have people knocking on my door saying, hey, we really want you to run, that I wouldn't consider it. I, I, I have two young children, I plan to be in Pembroke for a long time. It's, it's, it's the place we've decided to settle, and I plan to get involved and be involved. This was kind of my, like I said, paying a bill on the website, this was my opportunity to say, hey, how can I help? And, and again, not that, not that it's out of the question that I wouldn't run for a seat in the, in the future, but at this time, I didn't even consider it. And, and not because I wouldn't or wouldn't want to serve the, the town in any capacity, but that I saw this as an immediate need.
Thank you. Thank you. Sue?
Can I just interject real quick? How are we doing volume-wise for those in, in front and back? And everybody still struggling?
Sorry.
Okay, I want everybody to put on your Suzie voice and project as loud as the girl from Jersey.
We don't have Suzie voices.
I know, but give it your best-
If South Jersey get it right.
Yes, from South Jersey. So give it your best effort.
Maybe five.
And thank you for putting up with me, but we, I, I, you saw me, look, we are getting requests, some can't hear us. So some are probably now going to text and tell me to dial it down a few, but I'll, I'll do that. Thank you.
Do you want to say if David, he, David was going to-
He's going to be in, he's in the loop.
All right. So then my question is, well, I have like a quick question. How old are your kids?
One and three.
One and three, okay. So you have little ones too?
Yeah.
And then the same question that I gave. Is there one thing that you'd like the school committee to do differently or better? And if so, how would you do it? Or what would you do?
Yeah. So when I, when I spoke about seeking vocational options for students in Pembroke, I, I think that there's one opportunity that, I, I think, again, it's not unique to Pembroke, but I think there's an opportunity for us to involve the community that doesn't have school-age children, especially businesses, to help partner with us and pair with us to, to both explain what the needs are of local industry and to help us with the educational process to meet those needs. I know there's, there's state groups like Mass Hire, I've worked with Josh Cutler and Mass Hire in the past, my day job. And I think partnering with, with more entities in the community is really going to be one of the only solutions that, that communities like Pembroke will have to help provide some of those opportunities for students, vocational opportunities.
Okay, cool. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Steve?
Matt, hello. So what, so you mentioned basically that you're kind of coming in to, to help serve, to serve the community, serve the committee in this kind of capacity in the meantime, as a placeholder. So what, obviously, you don't have to get into anything personal or anything, but what reason or reasons at this time are you not interested in running? What made you decide that, I'm really not interested in running right now? Is it a, a capacity question? What, what is it that's holding you back at this time?
I can be 100% honest with you, I can tell you exactly what it is. I spent the last four years as president and vice president of the teachers' union in Duxbury, where I, where I work. And that was difficult. It, it was difficult given the pandemic, for one, for the amount of attention that unions received, that school committees received. And it was, it, it, it made it hard for me to love my day job. And so I, I stepped away from that role because it was, I don't want to say a burden, but it was, it was weighing heavily on me. And so I, I'm not looking to replace that. And again, not that this work is equal to that work, but I think that this is my way of being able to scratch that itch of providing for students without filling that role.
Thank you. And David, questions for Matt?
You know what, at this point, and first and foremost, let me apologize to the audience and to the television folks. I had a family emergency, I was here at 5:30 and had to shoot out to take care of an ill child. So I apologize, I was able to make it back. At this time, I'm assuming you're Mr. Chairman by virtue of the way we're set up. I'm going to abstain for right now and listen to the other comments because I didn't get to hear the other two people, so I'm not sure if I'm in a good position to be asking questions and making judgments at this time, so.
That's fair. We mentioned that earlier that any member does not have to ask a question, so it's your own prerogative. So I'll move on to Becky.
So, given your experience with the unions and with the school system, I assume you've spent a lot of time with, with understanding how the school budgets impact services and impact programming. So could you elaborate for the rest of us on how your experience might help you navigate a $2 million starting shortfall and, and the sort of near-term decisions we need to make? You've already talked about VOTEC, but maybe as someone who's been in the trenches and worked as the president of the teachers' union, you might have a, a different perspective on how those priorities get set at the school committee level?
Yeah. I mean, and one of the worst things, I think, any school system can experience is, is reductions in staff, right? And that's something you never want to see. And there are, there are ways to avoid it, but the problem is, is that you're always borrowing from someone else, right? And so really, the job of the school committee, the superintendent, the administration, is to really prioritize what the impact of that is going to be, right? And because Chapter 70 funding is kind of this moving, changing, fluctuating thing, it's hard to really predict what some of those resources are going to be. And I, and I think there's always an opportunity to increase revenue. I think one of the questions that I had right off the bat was, you know, do we see income from the rental of facilities? Can we increase that? And so there's, there's questions that I would have to change what we can change without affecting what we know we want to preserve. And so I, I think, you know, working with Representative Cutler is huge. I think he's got, his work cut out for him on the Labor Committee now at the State House, but I think being able to express where our needs are as a community and how some of those fundings from the State House and also internally can help alleviate some of those situations, I think, would be paramount.
Thank you. So everyone's had the opportunity to ask a question. Are there any secondary questions by the school committee?
Would you have any availability for sub-meetings? Or don't you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any secondary questions by the select board? Hearing none. Question period is over. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on now to closing statements. Each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement and we'll stick to the agenda for order. Michael Quinn.
Yeah, sorry. All right. Thank you guys for, for having me here. It looks like you guys have a pretty tough decision to make. We've got a couple of other pretty impressive people. I think we, we each kind of bring something different to the, to the committee. And I think that, you know, one thing that I bring to the committee, which I hope I was able to demonstrate through answering the questions, is just knowledge about and experience in budget as well as, you know, relationship building. You know, I think it's important to get the parents involved. I think it's important to get select board involved with school committee. We are going to have to work together as well as, you know, Representative Cutler and, and Susan Moran as well. So it's going to be a team effort, especially to, as I said, my number one priority is, is getting VOTEC going back in Pembroke. It's going to be a team effort with everyone trying to get funding to do that. So I hope I've been able to demonstrate, you know, my knowledge and what I would bring to the school committee. I think I've demonstrated my, my commitment over the past couple of months. And, but like I said, it's a tough decision. I think there, there's some pretty impressive people applying. So you have a, whichever decision you make, I trust will, will, will be a good one.
Thank you very much. And a closing statement from Adam Murphy?
Thank you again for, for allowing me to interview for this position. I appreciate the, the time that you've all taken tonight. Again, I'm, I may not have an education background, I may not have a financial background, I have an operational background. And I, I come from a, a strong, a strong, I have a very strong, obviously very strong work ethic. I've been with the same company for 23 years. I started there as soon as I graduated from high school and I never looked back. And I, I look forward to, to either working with, working with you guys as, as a member of the school committee or, you know, or, or being more involved in the town going forward, whether it be on another committee or, or helping out around the, around the school if you guys need it. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. And closing statement from Matt Viles?
Again, I want to thank everybody for their time. You know, and like Mike and Adam have said, I think this is a, this is a good problem to have, right? To have qualified candidates that each bring a different skillset to the table. And I, I just want to take a second to kind of address my opening statement and my closing statement. And, and I, I don't want anyone to think that I'm, I'm here just to sit in a seat. I know I mentioned the word placeholder, but, but really, you know, my passion is education. My, and I want to do everything that I can to make sure that Pembroke stays the community that we moved to as a family and that we continue to move forward. I think part of what was brought up during the budget process is it's important to have your needs and wants on the table all the time and to be always looking forward. And I think that it's, it's a great position for the board to be in, to be always looking forward. And my hope is that if you're chosen, that I can continue to help you head in the right direction.
Thank you. And I want to commend all three of you for coming before us. Each one of you have wonderful qualifications and, and you would all be a credit to the town of Pembroke. And I really appreciate you applying. So thank you. What we're going to do now is, both boards are going to deliberate. So I would invite all three of you to, to join the audience and, and, and stay here until a vote is taken. A vote will be taken tonight. And as a reminder, for both boards, candidates in the public, all of this is being done in open session. We are going to deliberate right here and now, and then we'll call on a vote at, at a point in time. Did you have a question?
Can you, can you, can you ask a question?
Not this evening. The, the, so what, this is just between the two boards, but what, what should have happened, and I imagine it did happen, was that the citizens, citizenry reached out to all the different boards and offered an opinion. I hope that happened. And if this occurrence ever happens again, we'll make sure we reach out ahead of time so that people know. But thank you for asking. All right, gentlemen, please- All right, gentlemen, please join the audience. Thank you one more time. All right, so this is... We'll have a deliberation, free and open. And once everyone has had a chance to discuss and it's clear that the deliberation is over, I'll call for a vote. And that vote will be a nomination and a second. And if we have multiple nominations and seconds, we'll vote on each candidate, and the candidate that gets the most votes will be selected. If there's a tie, we'll do a runoff until someone has the most votes. So, Lance, if you want to begin deliberations?
Sure. Obviously, it was great, and again, we thank the candidates. I think the first and foremost for me as a school committee member and the amount of time that we all put in and our volunteer time, I think commitment is a huge piece of that, so that's something that I value in this. And I appreciate Matt's honesty, but I'm concerned that it stops in after a couple of months, right? So, I'd like to see someone that's going to be with us along the way because we're all fairly new in this process, which is probably the senior veteran in our group.
Oh, I defer to David.
You...
I am.
David's older than me. As we're building our group together, we're all learning together, and we want someone that's totally going to continue to learn that process with us, so that's just my thoughts there. I think each one brings that uniqueness to the table that I think all three of those categories can benefit us, right? The VOTEC support is tremendous, his educational background is tremendous, and that's having a budget, we're coming through the budget process. So, it's always good to get a numbers person, because we know Mike was a numbers person and he was knee-deep in it, so it's always good to have someone there. And then, from the operations side, there's a lot of moving parts in a school system, right? So, it's always good to get that viewpoint. Operational guys, I'm one of them. We look at things in many different facets, and we do multitask, right? So, having that mindset is awesome too. So, I think we can't go wrong either way, but these are just some of the things that I value as I'm here in this.
Very good. Anyone else?
Yes, I actually kind of want to piggyback on what Lance has been saying. I agree. I think the commitment aspect is really important for me. I think that stability, especially in the school committee going forward, is huge for me personally. I do think that, again, like, everybody is so well-qualified in different ways and would help in so many different ways. And again, no matter who gets picked, I really hope that everyone wants to stay involved one way or the other because the town needs good people, and these are good people that want to get involved in the community. It's so important. To add to that, I do think with Mike leaving, some of the kind of skills and the abilities that he kind of took with him a little bit, especially through this time, are really huge. So, I would kind of... I would lean more in that direction. So, in that sense, I lean towards Mike personally.
Thank you.
My commentary, when I went through these resumes and I've been... Took a little break from work, been on vacation, so I had a lot of time to go through these resumes, they were extensive. And I think, to your point, each brought a very unique set of skills to the table, which, at the end of the day, each different, but each integral to what we do here, operationally, financially, and educationally. So, I kind of had to cancel out the resume. And then, I had to look... I'm looking at the level of commitment because, especially in the pandemic, this was a huge commitment. So, it took me a full year to go through the cycle and to become familiar with the day-to-day things and how things operate despite having been involved in the schools for 12 years. So, it became important to me to the level of commitment that the candidates have. And one stood out to me because of their attendance at meetings routinely for months now. And so, that differentiates that individual. As impressive as I find our educator to be, to fill the spot and then to potentially have to fill it again and that learning curve, have to restart, that kind of took him out of the running for me. And then, getting to the financial piece of it, I think the operational is important and, you know, again, that resume is extensive as well, but the financial piece is a piece that we're going to struggle with, with Mike being out. So, I've kind of gone down into that cone and seeing already attendance to the meetings, already the papers being pulled, and already the commitment is out there, that that kind of made Mike stand out for me and the group. And I will tell you, from just looking at the resumes, I didn't know how to pick. But that commitment is important to me because I know what kind of commitment those of us that were on the board as the pandemic began, it went from what some had described to me as a candidate of maybe, you know, a few hours each week of preparing for paperwork or doing some conversations and meeting the staff. Maybe I'm not as strong a learner as my colleagues, but I know I was devoting at times about 20 hours between conversations with the public, meetings, subcommitting meetings, endless Zoom calls that went on forever, and to the credit of this committee, answering sometimes 100 to 200 questions during these meetings. I'm looking for a person that has already engaged and is willing to potentially, if this COVID never leaves us, have to make that kind of commitment again. And so, for Mr. Quinn to be at our meetings already, to already have engaged in a committee that at times can generate a lot of heated discussion, he stands out for me.
Very good. Yes?
I guess my one concern is that it sort of... That some of that involvement seems a little more political, and I think that there's a value to someone wanting to be of service in a different way. And so, I wouldn't necessarily just count political activity the same way I would count experience. Becky, I'm sorry. Suzie, I'm sorry, I'm talking right now.
I'm sorry, I just said...
Okay.
I do have a follow-up question because I'm not sure about the...
Well, there was also a lot of political activity online by Mr. Quinn. Okay, so, I see that as being somewhat divisive. I will also say that when I look at budgeting capabilities, I think it's something very different to talk about a 30-something million-dollar school budget to talk about personal finances. I think that I actually was leaning towards Mr. Murphy because of his operations experience and because of his really not coming in with an agenda, but still having a lot of ties in the vocational world and a lot of commitment in the vocational world, as well as the ability to understand that he was operating with budgets that were affected by a lot of different contractual and regulatory requirements. Huge budgets, I would venture to guess. I don't think that these ships operate at cheap budgets. And so, he knows what it has taken to make some very difficult decisions during the pandemic, to move money around and to cut services. Mr. Files, I like the fact that he understands truly the impact of the choices we make. And, but I can see where you guys on the school committee might feel like having someone here for a few months. Part of me likes the idea of having someone for a few months, and then the public gets to decide in May, fresh, right? And there's no advantage or change to that, right? You just get a fresh start in May. And there's something that Mr. Files may have to contribute between now and May in terms of the vocational piece that could be extremely valuable because it's information that I don't think we have or that I've heard coming, the type of information that Mr. Files has in terms of his actual on-the-ground experience in the school system. I think he also has a lot of budget experience because he, as a member of a... As the president of the teacher association, he obviously is fighting a lot about budgets and money and where the money's going. So, he knows intricately where that money goes and what each impact can have on salaries and salaries and benefits. So, I thought Mr. Files brought his own set of expertise, and there's something refreshing about somebody who's not in it with any political baggage, it's just trying to, you know, volunteer, which I think is what brought a lot of us to town service many years ago. It was just a desire to volunteer and help. So, that's very important.
Very good. Thank you. Yes?
Well, I have to say, you know, I think, aside from the political piece of it, I agree with everything you said about both Mr. Files and, you know, I think, you know, they... All three candidates have amazing qualifications. There's no way around that. And I really appreciate, especially the operational experience that Adam has, I mean, the type of work that he does requires an attention to detail that most of us don't really need in our day-to-day, and I think that would always be beneficial on the school committee. And, you know, I think that all three of them putting their foot forward for this position, this volunteer position and, you know, giving us their resume and sitting down... Sitting there before the firing squad and getting all these questions, I mean, it's just, it's so nerve-wracking, and it takes so much... And it's volunteer, and they're doing it because they love our town, all three of them. So, I mean, I really appreciate everything that all three of them brought to the table. I really love the fact that we have this educational opportunity, but I do agree with my colleagues about the idea that, you know, we should have somebody... The level of commitment is very important. And, you know, I actually don't know what you're talking about, about the political stuff, because I haven't... I just... I sort of haven't looked as much on social media this year, so I have no idea what's going on. I felt like after the election, I sort of took a little bit of a break. But I have to say that, you know, what I have seen is Mr. Quinn has come to many of the school committee meetings. He's really made a commitment. He comes in, he takes notes, he's like here at every meeting. He's already filed papers, you know, for the upcoming election. He's really in it for the long haul. He really seems to have a desire to want to... All three of them have a desire to volunteer, so I don't want to discount any of that. So, I think for purposes of that, I would love to see him in the position. I would hope that the town would agree and then vote for him in the spring to continue on because the idea is, obviously, to have somebody continue in the position, you know, so that we don't have to, you know, somebody doesn't have to go through the budget cycle again and learn it because it's... There's a lot of learning involved, which I learned my first year in, so... But all three of them were, you know, obviously fantastic candidates. We're really, really, I think, blessed as a community that all three of them stepped up. So, but I would go with Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. Yes. No particular order, folks, just whoever would like to speak. It's a free form, I feel, is conducive to this discussion. Yes?
So, as you may know, I'm pretty active on social media myself. And, you know, I'm not aware of anything concerning that you're referring to. I'll say that I think it's okay that people have political opinions. I know you have political opinions. I have political opinions. People have different political opinions. I've not seen or heard of anything concerning from my perspective, so I don't know if that's an issue. That's my input on that.
Yes?
I agree. We have three candidates who put themselves out there, have three very different backgrounds, all come with strong attributes that would be positive for the board, for the committee. I think, for one, we're very lucky that we actually had three candidates that came forward to this. I do prefer the educational background for someone who's on school committee. However, I do feel the same way about the commitment. I think it could be a disservice to have someone who comes in for a short time and then they have to kind of reteach another member. So, I'm kind of torn between Mike and Adam.
Thank you. So, the next step would be take nominations. So, just putting that out there, if anyone else has any more discussion or deliberation, please speak. I'll accept nominations.
I'd like to nominate Mike Quinn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Adam Murphy.
Is there a second? I do not hear a second. It dies for lack of a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. We have one nomination, Michael Quinn, nominated and seconded. All those in favor by raising your hand? Any opposed? And Bill, could you take that down? And one abstention. Is that... That's the record? All right, very good. So, thank you to the school committee. Thank you to the select board. Thank you to all three candidates. Mike Quinn has been voted in. Mike, you will have to go see the town clerk and get sworn in, but I suggest... Do you have further business this evening?
No, we are...
Okay. So, congratulations. Thank you once again to all the candidates. I truly appreciate your commitment and your efforts in this. It's not easy to put yourself forward, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you. And we hope to see you elsewhere in the town. If there's no further business this evening, I'll take a motion to adjourn from the select board.
So, moved.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will take a motion to adjourn the school committee. Motion in a second. So, moved. Thank you. Thank you, select.